Robin, could you call the roll please?
Yes, I will. David Zucker.
Here.
Buddy Harden.
Here.
Richard Gardner.
Aye.
Justin Collier.
Aye.
Keith Hazelwood.
Aye.
We are in closed session.
Great.
Thank you.
There was one other participant in this conference. Please announce yourself.
We are not. We are canceling the work session.
So we're going right to the regular meeting?
That is correct.
Good. All right.
It is seven oh four, so I'd like to call the Library Board of Trustees' regular meeting to order. And we will begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, whose liberty and justice are our.
Could you call the role, Rob?
David Zucker.
Here.
Buddy Harden.
Here.
Mr. Darnar.
Here.
Mr. Giardano.
Here.
Justin Collier.
Here.
And Mr. Seads.
Renee Tillman.
Dan Moncharak.
Here.
Keith Hazelwood.
Here.
Do you have a question? Thank you. I did want to take one quick version from the regular agenda and welcome Keith Hazelwood to the Board of Trustees'.
Yep, Mr. Chair.
To working with you, sir. And welcome aboard. Okay, we will begin with public comment. Looks like we have three comments on agenda-related and one non-agenda-related item. First up will be Brian Rourda, and second seating will be Marsha Woods.
Good evening. During the discussions about closing library locations, there were multiple calls to have this library audited, insinuating if not accusing this library of wrongdoing. Library staff and board made it very clear that this library is periodically audited, and now that this audit is done for this year, it's worth noting that the audit found no significant discrepancies. We may disagree on the best way to spend the money, estimates may be wrong, and no plan is perfect, but at its core, this library operates in good faith. I'd like to thank everyone involved with the audit for their due diligence. One question came up during the meeting that I thought was interesting. I believe it was Mr. Seads that asked how they verify some of that data, and the representative said that they go to the source as much as possible. I can personally attest that I received a letter this year asking me to verify the authenticity of my donations. They are doing their job. Thank you very much. Have a happy holiday. Good night.
Thank you, sir. Yes. And after Marsha, we have Arne C. A.C. Deanoff.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm representing Moncharak, my husband, who is ill. Dear Board members, I wanted to bring to your attention a concern regarding the new email signature policy, which currently does not allow for the inclusion of personal pronouns. Additionally, the restrictions in the policy prevent employees from adding this information themselves. While I'm hoping this is an oversight, the restriction raises several concerns that I believe are important to address. We have a diverse group of employees, many of whom find personal pronouns vital to their identity. Allowing pronouns in email signatures harms no one, but their exclusion could upset and alienate a number of our staff members, especially if it's perceived as an intentional decision. Additionally, the exclusion of pronouns could potentially result in negative public attention. Given our recent challenges, avoiding another controversy is in the best interest of the library, its staff, and its reputation. Our library has negatively been in the media enough this last year. Personally, I value seeing pronouns in my coworkers' email signatures because it helps me address colleagues respectfully and appropriately, fostering a supportive work environment. When pronouns are omitted, it increases the likelihood of missteps in communication, which can unintentionally make someone feel uncomfortable or disrespected. This discomfort can undermine trust and cooperation, ultimately affecting workplace relationships and productivity. I want to provide the best possible support to my colleagues, but removing this option creates an unnecessary barrier to achieving this goal. The proposed policy reads, "The email signature block of each library employee email serves to provide contact information to the recipient of the email, and helps provide clear communication that the email is from a library employee." Including personal pronouns in the email signature directly supports the goal of providing clear communication by ensuring that colleagues and external contacts can address employees with accuracy. For the well-being of our employees and the effectiveness of interdepartmental relationships, I would ask that the Board rectify this omission and understand its potential impact on the St. Charles City County Library District, its staff members, and our community. This small adjustment would demonstrate respect for our diverse workforce and reflect our commitment to inclusivity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Arne C. A.C. Deanoff, county and district public advocate. And the first issue, which you know my topic is, is not giving away
There was one other participant in this conference. Please announce yourself.
We're canceling the work session.
We are not. We are canceling the work session.
So we're going right to the regular meeting?
That is correct. Good? All right. It is seven oh four, so I'd like to call the Library Board of Trustees' regular meeting to order. And we will begin with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, whose liberty and justice are our.
Tenants?
Could you call the board?
David Zucker?
Here.
Buddy Harden?
Here.
Mr. Darnar?
Here.
Cebu Jared Dono?
Here.
Justin Collier?
Here.
And Mr. Seads. Renee Tillman? Dan Moncharak?
Here.
Keith Hazelwood?
Here.
Do you have a form?
Thank you. I did want to take one quick version from the regular agenda and welcome Keith Hazelwood to the Board of Trustees.
Yep, Mr. Chairman.
To working with you, sir. And welcome, board. Okay, we will begin with public comment. Looks like we have three comments on agenda-related and one non-agenda-related item. First up will be Brian Rorda, and second seating will be Marcia Woods.
Good evening. During the discussions about closing library locations, there were multiple calls to have this library audited, insinuating if not accusing this library of wrongdoing. Library staff and board made it very clear that this library is periodically audited, and now that this audit is done for this year, it's worth noting that the audit found no significant discrepancies. We may disagree on the best way to spend the money, estimates may be wrong, and no plan is perfect, but at its core, this library operates in good faith. I'd like to thank everyone involved with the audit for their due diligence. One question came up during the meeting that I thought was interesting. I believe it was Mr. Seads that asked how they verify some of that data, and their representative said that they go to the source as much as possible. I can personally attest that I received a letter this year asking me to verify the authenticity of my donations. They are doing their job. Thank you very much. Have a happy holiday. Good night.
Thank you, sir. Yes. And after Marcia, we have Arne A.C. Deanoff.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm representing Muncher Woods, my husband, who is ill. Dear board members, I wanted to bring to your attention a concern regarding the new email signature policy, which currently does not allow for the inclusion of personal pronouns. Additionally, the restrictions in the policy prevent employees from adding this information themselves. While I'm hoping this is an oversight, the restriction raises several concerns that I believe are important to address. We have a diverse group of employees, many of whom find personal pronouns vital to their identity. Allowing pronouns in email signatures harms no one, but their exclusion could upset and alienate a number of our staff members, especially if it's perceived as an intentional decision. Additionally, the exclusion of pronouns could potentially result in negative public attention. Given our recent challenges, avoiding another controversy is in the best interest of the library, its staff, and its reputation. Our library has negatively been in the media enough this last year. Personally, I value seeing pronouns in my coworkers' email signatures because it helps me address colleagues respectfully and appropriately, fostering a supportive work environment. When pronouns are omitted, it increases the likelihood of missteps in communication, which can unintentionally make someone feel uncomfortable or disrespected. This discomfort can undermine trust and cooperation, ultimately affecting workplace relationships and productivity. I want to provide the best possible support to my colleagues, but removing this option creates an unnecessary barrier to achieving this goal. The proposed policy reads, "The email signature block of each library employee email serves to provide contact information to the recipient of the email, and helps provide clear communication that the email is from a library employee." Including personal pronouns in the email signature directly supports the goal of providing clear communication by ensuring that colleagues and external contacts can address employees with accuracy. For the well-being of our employees and the effectiveness of interdepartmental relationships, I would ask that the board rectify this omission and understand its potential impact on the St. Charles City County Library District, its staff members, and our community. This small adjustment would demonstrate respect for our diverse workforce and reflect our commitment to inclusivity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Arne A.C. Deanoff, county and district public advocate. And the first issue, which you know my topic is, is not giving away corporate greed or giving away free passes to major corporations of our region. We are a sought-out designation. St. Charles County is the place to live, and the place to recreate, and the place to raise families and educate children. By giving private projects the use of the Rice Seat Statutes, Chapter 100, Chapter 353, Chapter 357, or TIF, is ridiculous in most cases unless there's a huge return on investment or like a MasterCard that brings in four to five thousand jobs who are really going to make an impact on the community. Before the St. Charles City Council tonight is a Dearburgs application under the name of D3 Fountain Lakes LLC, which is a 10.75-acre retail grocery store with alcohol sales. And they're asking for a $30 million tax abatement. The district will be foregoing $6,210 over at least a 10-year period, so that's well over $63,000 of taxpayer dollars. And if you add this all up, it's millions upon millions of dollars that we're forgiving or foregoing. And so we really need to stand bold and stand up against these tax giveaways and these tax cuts. The commissioning that's on your agenda, $24,000, what is the exact return on investment? I don't see any return on investment. I see that the time is when the HVAC, the heating and air conditioning systems, wears out. That's when the time that we bring in the engineers and construct a good air handling system at that time. Otherwise, we're turning our wheels and wasting our resources and taxpayer dollars. The audit looks at basics, and so I ask that you put the audit on the district's website. It's an overview, and it looks at governmental accounting procedures, but it doesn't actually do tests of fraud, misspending, or misappropriation of funds. I'm still standing strongly and boldly for a state audit, either by petition form, which I had the petition in my hands from the state auditor, or by the governor's discretionary funding. Those go into forensics, and those go into a deep dive of exactly where the money is being spent, where the expenses are. For example, we have seventeen organizations and seventeen library associations total combined where we spend a lot of money on memberships, travel, and expenses that I think we could narrow it down to two or three organizations or memberships that deal with library associations and library organizations. I believe that there are ways that we can save and cut unnecessary spending, and I really believe that we need a clean slate and a state audit by the state auditor. So, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. And you're actually up next for your non-agenda items.
Thank you. So I'd like to start out by saying, welcome to Keith Hazelwood. I have the honor of working with Mr. Hazelwood at the county level. He served us in a diligent fashion and great advice with the St. Charles County as a county counselor. And I have to say, Mr. Hazelwood, they still haven't today replaced you with somebody that meets the criteria and the obligations of our county Home Rule Charter that's an actual resident of St. Charles County. And so your shoes still have not been filled. And so I want to welcome you to the board, and I look forward to a new chapter, a new day here, and more transparency and openness of our public library districts. Last month, I brought to the trustees' attention the homeless situation. Especially on this lot of Spencer Road, there's at least three to four individuals that are literally living on the lot and using the district's resources to use the public restrooms as their shower, et cetera. And so I didn't hear any discussion after my public comments last week, and I would encourage some type of dialogue with the trustees and you asking administration to look into the situation. We need to have some enforcement on the parking lot because it's a liability, in my opinion. If something happens or if something takes place, we're liable, I believe. And so I'd like to see some type of investigation by the administration or some type of direction by the Board of Trustees. It's not only here, it's at Dear Run, it's at other facilities throughout our county. And we really need to look at it and make sure that they're getting the resources and the necessary assistance, whether it's mental health or housing situation, getting the help that they really truly deserve and need. I reached out to the acting district director and was kind of put off by not getting the proper information that I needed to move forward to try to rectify and make the situation better. I brought up the organizations and associations with the Chamber of Commerce's and all the national library associations from A to Z in terms of a agenda. We belong to almost everything, and it's almost duplicative and unnecessary, in my opinion, of wasting those taxpayer dollars. And finally, I want to bring up the attorney. We have the president of Lashley Bear, the attorney law firm that you pay. And is it really necessary for her to be here at each and every meeting, especially when we have three trustees who are Missouri-certified bar, Supreme Court, law-holding attorneys? And especially, one of them was in government for a good majority of his life in private practice and governmental practice, and knows and understands city government and county government. And I think it's another duplicative layer that we're just wasting taxpayer money, especially with Mr. Hazelwood's expertise. Mr. Zucker serves as mayor of Darden Prairie and knows Chapter 79 in governmental and local government. And I'd like to see if we can cut those expenses. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have reports in correspondence. We have the chief financial officer's report. Don't have questions? Please.
So I just want to let you know that we've decided not to pursue the electronic vehicle, or sorry, electric vehicle, or the charging associated with it. We will, and we do, have an RFP out for an additional vehicle, and we'll be looking at a vehicle program in the future as well. Secondly, I mentioned in my report that we've got a managed print services RFP that we're evaluating. I just want to let you know that that will be a lease program, most likely five years. It won't be capital-intensive to begin with. I just didn't want you to be misled by that. Any questions if you have any questions, please let me know.
Any questions on the chief financial officer's report from the board? Thank you. Up next, we have the chief communication and engagement officers' report.
I'll let you guys read what's in here, but I just wanted to point out our gratitude to the friends of the library, who put on a very successful two weekends, two mini book fairs, utilizing the space at the mall. Netted somewhere just north of $18,000 over those six days. So really, really impressed. And on the first day of the event, crowds were waiting at the door and wrapped around that second floor. They were right outside the doors. So, very well received. Thank you to those of you who came out and joined us. So it's nice to see you. Any questions about the communications report?
Any questions from the trustees on the board's report?
The book fair was great. Granddaughters, and they bought twenty books, and...
Excellent. That's great to hear.
They bought twenty books, they... They figured them out.
There you go. Thank you, Laura Penn. Up next, we have the chief administrative officer's report.
So I also won't read the report, but would you all read it? I would point out, it's also not so much a reading challenge if you're interested. And just a reminder that the library is closed on December 24th and 25th, as well as January 1st.
Any questions, comments?
Join that winter reading program.
There you go.
I might have more time.
There you go. Up next, we have the interim chief executive officer's report.
Yes. So what I would really like to focus on is about the renovations and how we're doing with the renovations. You can see on the first page of the report that we have several change orders. Part of what we were supposed to be doing is sharing the change orders with the board at the next meeting following a change order. And unfortunately, some of that got lost in translation before I became interim. So I wanted to make sure we put the ones on here that you all hadn't seen before. And to talk a little bit about the timeline and how the renovations are going, we are really lucky to have Scott and Greg from Avast Young, and we have Dan from Product Architecture, who are going to tell us a little bit about timeline and how we're doing. And I'm excited that you actually get to hear from people who know it better than me saying that was for the bathroom. Do they need the microphone? I think they do need the microphone. Just project.
Yeah.
As far as schedule? Who do you think is going to manage that? As far as schedule? We are talking right along the schedule. A lot of the heavy lifting, a lot of the heavy work is kind of complete. What I mean by heavy lifting is a good example would be last, a week ago last year, we had Alan come down and move books out of the space where I didn't go to finish. So, the heavy lifting is basically they're moving the library ranges with the book lot. They got a proprietary system that is able to come in and pick up the shelf and move it. And this project was kind of unique because we kept everything within the library. It was like taking a game in the phase of construction. We moved up all the new work for the top part, and we're in that second move right now. And the work that's remaining in that area is, we got new rooftop units. Standing the ductwork through the ceiling plenum, so we're trying to get out of the ceiling. Once we're out of the ceiling, then we'll work on the flooring, the painting, everything else. The restrooms are tiled out. So the next step is to come in and turn out the plumbing fixtures and put up the telepartitions and put all the clusters in. And we're looking for completion in February, mid-February. And that is right on schedule with what we planned before we started the project. It's good news.
So I will just add, I'm also great coodron with Avast Young. I'm going to say completion, that's construction, who we met today, of course, with. Oh, Seth, there's a lot of bringing it all back online. So in completion, that doesn't mean open. That means getting the construction done now, all the heavy work from the library. Getting the rest of the books lined out, computers, et cetera, they can play the drill. But there's a lot of follow-on steps before that whole library is open. It's, we're all on the same page there.
So what is our timeline after completion of construction?
Chris, do you want to talk a little bit about after completion? Timeline after completion of, yeah, construction, us next. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Krista Ali. I'm the purchasing and building projects manager for the St. Charles Library District. So we are going to try to, we are working on getting a timeline together, and I've got a Gantt chart and a schedule going. But pretty much, we're targeting for mid to end of March. So probably four to six weeks. We don't have it completely detailed out yet, but we're working on that, so that's the plan. So definitely before April 1st. That's the target.
Thank you. Dan, do you have anything to add, or?
I don't. If you guys had any questions about the potential RCOs, I was here to answer those questions.
Okay.
I would say things are moving along. We had a great staff meeting today. I was in there, I was inside, sort of walking the site. The purchase of this building in the second phase. We kind of went through and made sure that everything was completed up to specification and the drawings. So there were some issues that we worked through with Aspire. We had to break down the site. And then it's just clear, so that has the library resources move in and make it take occupancy of those spaces without starting the warranties. So as soon as the second phase is complete, that will come down and also help with the furniture. I'm doing right. Placing the furniture and then getting the staff getting into library management. Then again, if you do have any questions about your RCOs, I can answer those too.
Are there any questions from the trustees on this project or anything else in the interim chief executive officer's report? Up next, we have the statistical report.
So the statistical report, as you can see, circulation in branch visits and program. Might do double duty if I have to, if I have to. Program and event participation continue to be down here to date due to the temporary closure of Biddenorf-Curdell branch. For perspective, library visits are only down by 3.4% overall. You're seeing many of our branches experience an increase in gate count. So, and also passport applications have increased by 4% even with Biddenorf-Curdell, which is one of our busiest branches, closed. So, we're staying busy.
Great. Any questions, comments on the statistical report?
I notice we keep track of daily, like, gate count, people coming and going. And I was wondering, is the data available if we would ever need it to break it down by time of day of patron trip? Is it heavier in the morning hours or the afternoon hours and the evening hours?
We have that information. We also have, we're also doing head count throughout to make sure we know how many people are in the building at specific times. So, and we do it, how often are we doing it? Once an hour on the half hour. Once an hour on the half hour. And that gives us a better idea, are people staying? What are they utilizing our space for? So we have a better idea rather than just in and out of the building.
So should we ever need it, we can break down the daily traffic by time of day.
Up next is correspondence, and we have a letter from the city of St. Charles on the proposed development project D3.
And per the direction of the board, you sent a letter?
Yeah. Perfect. That's what I can ask. Any other questions or comments on the letter we received from the city of St. Charles? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. On the chief's consent agenda are the minutes for approval, the draft minutes from the November 19, 2024 work session, and regular meeting. Hopefully, everyone has had an opportunity to review those and make corrections if needed. And if there are none, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes passed present.
I move that minutes be approved as written, a second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, the motion passes. Next up, we have the formal agenda, and first on the formal agenda is unfinished business, 2519 Authorization to Engage Firm for Retrocommissioning of Spencer Road Supplemental.
So I won't reread the agenda memo content. I do have Toquancy Logan here. She is our facilities and logistics manager. She basically contributed to this agenda memo. So I have her here to answer any questions that you have. And she has a few comments that she would like to make as far as the application process and the funding that's available. So, I'll let you start off with any questions that you have for Toquancy.
Perfect. Any questions for Toquancy upfront before we hear from her or any of the trustees?
One question that I would have is, have we actually done an energy audit of our energy consumption relative to other buildings of this age and this square footage to know how much potential savings we might reap from this investment?
So we have not done a study, but we actually put all of our information into Energy Star. And because there are no other lot, not there aren't any other libraries, but libraries aren't a... but libraries aren't a category yet, that's why they're trying to get us to put them in there. There is no way to compare us to other libraries. We have, we can look at our energy usage per branch, but we can't compare it to anyone else at this point.
Just as a point of information, the reason I bring this up is that I did some independent research on energy audits in general and found out that the state of Missouri actually offers grants of up to twenty thousand dollars for energy audits.
Correct. So I addressed that in the memo. So the audit that is the Department of Natural Resources allows, that's the fifty thousand dollar proposal that we received. So it would cost fifty thousand dollars to do that energy audit, and they would give us twenty thousand if we were approved. The Ameren audit is twenty-three thousand, and they would give us that twenty-three thousand if we were approved.
I see, okay.
So there are two different types of audits. The audit we've asked for is just a regular energy audit. The one that they asked for is an ASHRAE level two audit.
Okay. Okay, so we are taking advantage of those programs.
We have looked at both of them, both of them, and I can go on to my comment, is that on December the fifth, I received an email from Ameren that we missed the funding deadline for, not the deadline, but they had given all the funding out on December the fifth. And so they encouraged us to go ahead and apply for January. However, they're not sure if they're going to have money because they have so many, so many projects that are carrying over from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. But both programs right now, this late in December, have already suspended any funding.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? To Quincy, did you have, you said you had some additional information or think you were?
That was just it about the fact that Ameren did say they were done with funding on December the fifth.
Okay. So Spencer Road was constructed in twenty-eleven, correct? Twenty?
I think it was twenty-eleven.
Twenty-eleven. They were in the building.
So we're looking at fifteen-year-old equipment at this point. We have replaced some of the mechanical equipment?
We have replaced several compressors, several motors, lots of sensors.
Okay.
Not in complete packaging.
Okay.
But the bottom line is, we have not, we have not yet had the energy audit, is that right?
No, that's what we're trying to do.
Right. Yeah. I just, my view is that we would not, oh, I'm getting out of school here. I'd like to see the energy audit before we make a decision like this.
So the controls, that's mentioned here, and that's, you know, a major, a major part of this. Do we know if this control system is, it can't even be upgraded? I mean, are we just looking at old stuff here that's out of date and we can't do anything? We already know that?
My understanding that it's out of date and that they can't do anything. I've asked for them to add notifications, and they said that it can't, it can't provide notifications to let us know that we have alarms or that we have issues, that it's not capable. We've also had issues about it being compatible, compatible to Windows twenty-eleven. We were able to finally get it working, but, so that's been an issue as well.
Do you have anyone in the district that regularly checks the system? Or do you look at it or, how does that, how does that work, I guess?
So I would say we try as a staff, the Spencer staff and I, to go and check it. I won't say this every day, but periodically, somebody goes by and checks it.
Okay.
Because if we don't check it, otherwise, the only way we know is because we have an uncomfortable area in the building. So we try to check it regularly. So that's library staff that knows how to log in and check it for alarms.
Are there any other questions? Comments from board members? Seeing none, I will seek a motion to authorize the staff to engage Gerald Mechanical Contractors for retrocommissioning study at Spencer Road Ranch for the amount not to exceed twenty-three thousand three hundred and sixty dollars.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No. I'm opposed.
Oh.
I'm opposed. The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Okay, next up on the agenda is new business. We have item twenty-five twenty-one fiscal year twenty twenty-four audit acceptance. Julie, do you have any?
I don't, I don't actually have the agenda memo.
Yeah, I don't either.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, so I guess we're just, if you had any additional comments about the audit, I mean, we all went through the process yesterday.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I don't.
Okay, all right. So I think we all, as discussed, we went through the audit process yesterday, saw the audit. It was a good audit, it was a clean audit. So I don't know if any trustees have any comments or questions. I think everything was pretty well hashed out yesterday. I think there's really anything to discuss, so. If there's not, I will, oh, I will make one more point that the Finance and Audit Committee, which consists of the officers of the board, did recommend it for adoption. So it was the recommendation of them, so just wanted to point that out in case that anyone needed that information. So with that being said, I would seek a motion to accept the fiscal year twenty twenty-four audit as presented.
So move. Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the motion passes. The final item for new business this evening is agenda item twenty-five dash twenty-two, approval of new policy E zero nine zero email signature policy. And I will begin by offering a motion to table this item until next month.
I'll second that.
Okay. We do have a motion and we have a second. Is there any further discussion on tabling this item?
It's a privileged motion, no debate.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
We have four yes, three no. Correct?
I'm not sure. I thought we were split.
Yeah. Did you? Aye, okay. Then we, yes, okay. So that was four to three. The motion passes. We will table agenda item twenty-five twenty-two until January twenty twenty-five's regular meeting. Seeing nothing else on the agenda, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Move.
One is there, second, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, we are adjourned.